We'll call this special meeting to order. Would you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to announce what this means about G or do you want everyone to do that? Yes. Okay, so we'll let him speak first. If you want to do that, you ought to go ahead and do it first. Superintendent, you have a comment?
So before we begin the public input process for the hearing this afternoon, we're going to start with a quick overview of the process and compliance with Florida State statute. And Ms. Sammy Cockcroft is going to come forward and give us a brief overview of the process that was used.
Superintendent, Chairman Gamble, board members, thank you so much for allowing me to speak as we open this public hearing in a few minutes. The public hearing was advertised and as well in the newspaper, as well as through social media, and we are very thankful that the community had an opportunity online and in our office for the 20 days as required by statute to review the materials. We had members of the community review the materials at two different times upon their request and had two inputs online, and you have copies of the input that we had online. Each time, we had staff available to answer questions and offered to stay as long as they needed to review the materials. Per statute, we are required to make the student materials available for public review in order to determine if the materials meet the course requirements and expectations as per the course descriptions. In addition, we made the teachers' editions available for review, as we knew there were some concerns with those materials as well. We are here tonight, we have staff members here tonight, as well as myself, this afternoon, in order to answer any questions as we proceed through this hearing.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, following what Ms. Cockcroft has to say, the school district probably noticed this public hearing. The purpose of the hearing, as stated in Florida statute 1006.283, is to allow the parent of a public school student or a resident of the county to proffer evidence that a recommended instructional material does not meet the criteria provided in section 1006.312, taking into consideration course expectations based on the district's comprehensive plan for student progression under Florida statute section 1008.25 per n.2, and course descriptions in the course code directory. With that, individual members of the public who wish to speak should come forward one at a time and speak directly to this issue and offer any evidence they want. I'm assuming the chair is going to continue to limit participation and proffering of evidence to three minutes per person.
Yes, sir. First public notice input we have is from Ms. Marie Dubois.
Marie Dubois, Howie in the Hills. I have three points. I went and looked at the books and did some work online. The district staff was very pleasant and tried to be very accommodating. My hope is that when we do this next time, we go above and beyond what the statutes require and that the notifications are louder, bolder, earlier, and attempt to get more input from parents and the community. I would argue also, my second point, that we as a community, as a district, as parents, whoever, I think we need to demand better textbooks to choose from. One that I reviewed was titled, "United States Government: Our Democracy." Now, we just recited the Pledge of Allegiance. Did we say to the flag and to the democracy for which it stands? We did not. And there are many, many references to a democracy throughout the book. I sent on an online review of it that I used some other sources for, and to me, when you start doing this and mixing up terms and definitions, we end up with the kids that we have in college now that are thinking socialism's great and also thinking the Electoral College needs to go. Now, in February, my third point here, in February, Governor DeSantis made his bold announcement to get rid of Common Core and associated curriculum. While social studies is not technically Common Core, from what I'm told, Common Core is weaved through every subject, and we all know that, and there are Common Core standards for math and language arts woven into social studies, and it just seems to me the responsible track to take would be to hold off spending millions of tax dollars until all the standards have been evaluated and any changes made that may be made, especially in light of the emphasis now on civics, because US government is definitely civics, whether it's titled that or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen West?
I'm Karen West from Yalaha, and I'm speaking as an individual and as a 25-year Lake County school teacher. And one of my interesting jobs as a media specialist for the last 20 years of my work was to have all of the textbooks examination done in the media center, because it was the only place where you could house them. So I always chatted with the teachers. I saw them come in with their rubric, knowing what they needed to teach, what would be tested, and give very serious consideration to the choice of the textbooks which the state allowed them to choose from. I also know that the textbooks that they got to choose from had to pass muster in the state of Texas, which is the biggest purchaser of public school textbooks, and so they always had a strong conservative's land. Given this, seems to me we ought to let the teachers make the choices for what will help them meet their stated goals and be a textbook that will help their children pass the required tests. I wish it were not that way, but let's trust the teachers. If the state thinks they trust them enough to let them carry guns if the counties choose, you know, maybe they also could teach.
Thank you. Vance Yoakam.
I'm using this side because I'm going to show you some screenshots. But first, Vance Yoakam, I write the blog fiscalrangers.com. I also was able to attend a meeting on Friday, look at the books. I'd like to thank the staff who are all here, and they were happy and pleased to answer all our questions. They brought out the books, even the teachers' copies, which I did request. It was a massive undertaking, and frankly, I was a little overwhelmed. I did spend time on one book. That's the one that's showing here, Ways of the World. That's an AP history book. That's from a company, Macmillan, which in turn is owned by a German company now. And I just sat down, I looked at the table contents in the beginning, and I can tell you that I was just amazed at how many times it said Islam. They were, they had word problems, and it would talk about something related to Islam over and over and then over again. Okay, now, I know the staff put together a comparison where they did spend quite a bit of time, and I appreciate that, for going through books, looking at areas on Islam and other areas like that. I haven't been able to confirm that, because when I went through about four years ago McGraw-Hill books that you're using for sixth and 10th grade, there was no ser- equal comparison. There was just a massive chapter in both the sixth grade and the 10th grade books. The sixth grade book chapter was not even related to any of the standards. They took some generic standards, like want to learn the foreign culture, and then they put in an entire chapter on Islam. In both of those cases, they were pro-Islam. They didn't talk about the 270 to 600 million people who have been killed by Islam over the 1,400 years since they were founded. Matter of fact, that sixth grade book, and I just looked at the ones that you had, the Islam did not start until after the fall of the Roman Empire, which is around 500, 600 AD, and yet it was included in the sixth grade book, which is supposed to end at the fall of Rome, not the current one. Now, the current ones, what they've done is they've added the entire, from, you know, the beginning of history all the way to current times in both books, and yet the books are supposed to be on one thing or another. So my view is that the, you have standards. I agree, you have to follow the standards. You inherited them, you got them from the state association that created them, and then it went from there to, because of basically a bribe, the federal government bribed you and said if you adopt these standards, or standards, and those were the only ones available, you would get that money. And I think that needs to be a lot of work. I'm just really disappointed that even teachers, if they are well-meaning, that they are being asked to teach this kind of stuff, if they even understand it. Now, I have a lot of background in researching this. I think that some of the contents of these books should not be in there at all, and I just, I think you ought to hold out, like Marie said, until after the one-year review of Common Core. I don't think you ought to decide on any of these books now, because they'll have content that I don't think is appropriate.
Thank you.
And I should have gotten 20 minutes, you know? Then I would go, roll.
You're not the presenter.
Well, it's kind of sad when you have just proponents, but you don't have anybody to really talk about the opposite side.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mike, I'm not going to try and pronounce your last name. I think I know what it is, but I'll just call you G.
Jeffreyon. My name is Mike Jeffreyon. I teach AP World History at Eustis High School, and I was a part of the team of AP World History teachers that selected Ways of the World as our text for next year. First, to give you a little bit of rationale why we picked that particular book. Our current textbook, Traditions and Encounters, the first edition predates the AP World History course. It's a book that's been sort of adjusted to meet the requirements for AP, but it's really an old college world civilizations textbook. Ways of the World was actually designed specifically to meet the requirements of AP, and as such, it is designed to be read by high school students. Right now, and most of the texts that College Board deems as acceptable texts to teach AP World History, they are college-level textbooks, and that creates an obstacle for many of our students, not just an obstacle of is their reading level up to that, but an obstacle of they may be prone to give up or not do assigned reading as homework, and that has been holding back their student achievement. In fact, I would say the fact that they're not reading is the greatest obstacle that we need to overcome as teachers to do that. So we picked a text that was a little bit less intimidating. Now, as far as the including Islam and everything of that nature, trade is a very important process in all of world history and in our present world today. And for a good chunk of history, Muslim traders were controlling trade along the Silk Road, throughout Sub-Saharan Africa, and throughout the Indian Ocean. In fact, it's because of one of these Islamic societies, the Ottoman Empire, that it led to the foundation of our own country, because the Europeans did not want to trade with and therefore enrich these Muslim empires, so they wanted to find an all-water route to Asia. This is what Columbus was looking for, and that's why the 13 colonies that birthed this great nation came into existence. Without that context, how can we really have a true understanding of the world that we live in? Now, as far as the old textbook, one, the old textbook has an entire chapter on the founding of Islam and Islamic caliphates, and it has the later Turkish-speaking ones that are going to be part of the curriculum next year. Next year, the curriculum begins at 1,200. They have some changes there. That said, a couple of quick things. One, the, to really see what AP courses are about, you go to the AP Central World History, download the course and exam description. That is what students are taught. The textbook is just a tool. The other very important thing to note here is these AP classes are academic electives. Yes, they fulfill graduation requirements as well, but if somebody wants a worldview of history that focuses a little bit more on European society, maybe spends a week on Africa and a week on Latin America, take regular world history. It's there. You don't have to take AP World History. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all our public input cards. So we'll bring it back to the board and the superintendent. At this time, if any comments or questions you have for staff?
I do have the question of what are the repercussions for waiting a year, as was suggested, or longer, correct?
I can, I can tell you, the teachers would be very disappointed. They've spent a lot of time investing in these resources, and they've waited a long time to get the resources. I'm, I will, I will say that I don't anticipate that these standards would change. Again, Common Core is specific, what's being reviewed are the ELA and math standards, and these standards, there's no anticipated revisions to these particular standards. So I would say that the resources that we have are aligned to the curriculum. As the gentleman just said, they are a resource. Our blueprints follow the scope and sequence that's identified by the state of Florida for them to teach, and the teachers use it as a resource. So I would not advocate that we wait, unless the instructional materials rule has changed. They used to give you two years from the day that the adoption window opened in order to make a selection, and I know that our teachers would be disappointed if we had to wait, so I would not advocate for that.
I would say it would just be the, I mean, if they changed the standards, then you have to wait for the textbooks companies to even rewrite the textbooks before they're going to come forward to do another adoption period, so you're looking at three.
Which is my point of the two-year window, we would be well outside of that anyways. Yeah.
And certainly, our experience looking at textbooks is really they just stick a Florida sticker on there. And so I don't know that they would actually even revise the textbook very much, based on any sort of changes we make as a state.
Mrs. Cockcroft, could I ask you a question? Mrs. West brought up a good point about, and I'm glad I saw the teacher here from Eustis High School representing that, but how many teachers were actually from the schools involved with this?
Every, every school has the opportunity to vote, and let me look at the exact list. Every school has the opportunity to attend and vote and do it. As far as how many actually did review the materials and vote, nine out of 10 high schools. How many teachers in each of those high schools, I'm not certain.
Okay.
Because they get one vote per school.
Okay.
I, I will say, and I don't, I know that, I know that we do what the best we can do with the instructional materials. I think Mr. Yoakam said it's overwhelming. You saw all of the materials there are to review, and I know the textbook adoptions I've been through, they deliver all of those materials to the, either the library or the cafeteria. You've got a couple of days to go through them, and then you make your decision and send it back, and it's, I feel like sometimes, having been through the process, that sometimes we do make decisions based on what it looks like and the pictures, and I'm not talking just about this one, I'm talking about every textbook, because what amount of time is there in your day after school to go and sit down and really look at a text? So outside of the person who comes as a committee member or the representative, I'm not sure how thoroughly our teachers, I think there's less AP teachers than, say, elementary math teachers that have to review the text, but if there was some way for us to give teachers more time with any textbook review, I think that you're going to, I think it would benefit the teachers. I don't, I don't know if that, what that looks like, especially with the timeline with the adoption materials. I know the reasons that we do the way that we do it, but if there was any way to provide them more time, or even just a guideline, I know we give them the state, the state adoption, the list that they have to fill out that way, but if there's something specific to this county, like if reading, writing, thinking, talking is our emphasis, when we go to reading, language arts, then maybe we give them a rubric with R, reading, writing, thinking, talking, and say, can we look at that?
We did update the rubric to include our goals, yes, to include authentic literacy.
Good, good.
And the civics standards are to be reviewed. That just passed the other day, so I did want to make sure that we were aware of that as well. They're bringing in outside agencies to review the materials by December of 2019, and then the standards by 2020 for those.
Okay. Well, the reason I asked what I did is because of what Ms. West brought to our attention, and then Ms. Luke brought to our attention as well there in that, because I don't want the teachers to think, well, it doesn't matter our thoughts or our opinion. It does to me. I mean, they, we receive emails at times and all, but I have not received a lot of information from teachers that are against this, as far as, you know, if they were, you know, I would think they would want to send us an email saying, hey, you're fixing to approve this, but I do not go for this, or I'm not for this, or whatever, because I would appreciate that type of information, rather than they just say it doesn't matter what our opinion is, the board is going to do whatever the board's going to do. No, we try to do what's right for everybody, I think, and we've been pretty fair, I think.
We've adopted different texts for different levels. I know we've done K2 and 3.5 different, whenever they meet the different needs, and obviously we've got different textbooks from different history courses, so.
They had the opportunity to review the books individually because of the uniqueness of their subjects in history.
Right.
Is there any way that in the future we can have the, like this, I know that the SAC committee and possibly the PTO review the books, but can we have the books available for both those committees and the public in the libraries, the way Ms. West said she had them available for the teachers and?
There are, the hard copy books are available at every school during the review period for the schools, and some SAC members have served on those committees. I don't know how many SAC members came into the school to do that. We had one in our review at the district office that I'm aware of. So we could work with our principals to make sure that that information gets out to their SAC committees at that time.
And to the public?
And I also, we plan to leave the books online available through the June 10th meeting, that where we will be making a decision as well.
Okay.
Well, I'll share with the board that I had, I undertook a little bit of homework this weekend. I read through quite a bit of the world history chapters that were presented in the various books.
Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you, right, I know. Let mom take a nap while I read history textbooks. But in anticipation of this, because I know some of the things that have come forward to this board, presented by the public in the past, have particularly focused on Islamic bias or slant or imbalance of content, right? And so having come from the elementary world, I did have to take some time to become familiar with the middle school and high school standards and what those, what those entail, and there are a lot of standards that, that address Islam, particularly at the high school level, and there are, there is one in particular that asks students to compare the major beliefs and principles of Judaism, Christianity, and Islam. So of course, the students would have to also then gain an understanding of Judaism and Christianity. And I'll confess that looking at this book, there was an imbalance of content, that there was, there was barely any sort of material there that addressed the beliefs and principles. Most of the content that addressed Christianity, for example, focused primarily on the conflicts of the church and the struggles either internally or socially, or its rise or struggle to power, that kind of thing, which, which to me is a different item than the beliefs and principles. Now, that being said, the textbook is a tool, right, that we know is, those of us who have taught in the classroom, that the textbook is never going to cover 100% of everything that you're looking for, and there's probably going to be extra stuff in there that you don't need to teach. So that being said, I know our district has used a great tool, the blueprints, to guide teachers in that. Now, there's a tragedy if a teacher were to take a book and start on page one and just work their way through, because then they will cover certainly content that's not part of the standards. I had the chance to actually speak with one of our program assistants today, so thank you very much for that opportunity, Natalie, and I got some education on how she develops these things, and if there are, if there's content in the book that is not related to the standard, they don't put that on the blueprint, right? So, so a teacher would then not just start at page one and read all the way to the end and spend a month on something that's not addressed in the standard. So I think that can kind of rest our minds at ease on that part. But, and then similarly, we use those oftentimes as a resource to guide teachers to outside materials, when they have to supplement, and in this case, we see some areas where the textbook has fallen short. So they would, of course, supplement, they would, you know, look for maybe other articles or bits of information that would then help them accomplish the standard. So that, that being said, I think we'll never find a textbook that's perfect. I think in this, in this, through the nature of this process, we're looking at a book and we're trying to figure out what's wrong with it, and we're going to find something wrong with every single one of them. I think, gosh, who was it? One of you said, we need to argue for better textbooks, and I wholeheartedly 100% agree with that statement, and Vance, I think you also, I was impressed with your observation that you were able to pinpoint that, yes, they, they throw this extra material in, throw a standard up on top, but that standard isn't actually the one that's being addressed by the content, and that happens all over the place. I've seen it time and time again, whether it's a reading textbook, or a science textbook, or a math textbook, happens over and over and over. So that's where I have to rely on our district folks and their professionals, and to go in with the blueprints, guide our teachers through this, help them supplement appropriately, and, and figure out what to leave out. I think if we're, if we're always looking and we find something wrong with a book, we'll not end up with any book, and clearly, we've got to have one. So it's about bringing in the right resources and empowering our district staff to have the resources available to put those products together for our teachers and just guide them through some professional development to continuously learn and understand how to, how to teach the standards and how to evaluate our, the book, and, and go from there. And likewise, I think this is a very sensitive topic, right, because now if, let's say I'm the world history teacher, and I see that there's only like a couple of pages on the beliefs of Christianity, now I've got to rely on my own knowledge, and last thing I want to get accused of is evangelizing in my classroom, right? So, so there's, there's a fine line there of, of bringing the information in that is teaching the standard, and where do you cross that line? So, you know, I'll look to the district staff to put that out through the blueprints.
Can I also say thank you to Mr. Jeffreyon? That's one of our Rookie Teachers of the Year from the past, and we appreciate, you don't have to come up. I said thank you very much for coming up, right? As a teacher, you know, to take your time this evening and come out here and talk to us about the text and the standards, and seems like you've done your homework. We appreciate it very much.
Actually, I have no intention of being at this meeting. I didn't even know what was happening.
Nice.
You're just hanging out here.
It was nice to see you again.
All right. Any further comments?
I just want to ask the superintendent, did you see this, this was in our packet?
I have not seen it. I know it was in front of me, but it was.
It was just given to us just before the meeting.
Yeah, that's why I was reading it, as people were talking.
So, no, I have not read it.
It seems like it's, there's some relevant concerns about this other book.
Which one?
The Understanding Economics.
Understanding Economics 2018.
We'll certainly re-review it, and I'll share it with staff, and we'll take a look at it. These, this will not come before you for a vote until our next meeting, which will be June the 10th.
That's what I didn't know.
So, in the meantime, we'll have a chance to review this and make sure that we provide you any additional information that might be important before you make a decision.
Hold on, thanks.
All right. And, Ms. Cockcroft, I wanted to say thank you for coming up and answering the question that I did. Thank you very much. And I'd just like to say, all that did bring, you know, something with the public notice. We appreciate your input, and it's taken in very much consideration, and we appreciate you taking the time to, to come up there and review these textbooks for us. It was lengthy for you to do it.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We're going to hold our board member comments and probably until the regular meeting. We don't have anything else on here. We can go get coffee if you don't want to.
We might as well comment now. We might as well comment now.
Yeah, to cut down my meeting time.
You've got stuff to say.
Do we have comments? I mean, we don't, I, I mean, I think if we have any more comments on this issue, I think they would, the public might want to hear.
Do you have more comments?
No, I don't. Didn't know if anyone else did.
All right. But if y'all want to do your comments now, you can, I don't care.
What are we doing now?
Go ahead, Mr. Mathias, kick it off.
I don't have your comments.
Ms. Luke?
I'm good.
Mr. Dye?
I'll reserve mine to the general meeting.
You just wanted to extend my time.
That's right.
You didn't bring any.
I think there are more people going to watch the general meeting, so.
You didn't bring the show and tell, did you?
Yeah, not this week.
Okay.
No.
All right. All right, well, I'll wait till then too, since it's going to be a little lengthy. All right, well, I'll wait till then too, since it's going to be a little lengthy. All right. Nothing else, superintendent, did you want to say anything?
I just would also like to say thank you to staff. They've invested a lot of time working with our teachers. Thank you to our teachers for their involvement in the process. Thank you for being here tonight. And thank you to the members of our community who gave of your time, who really support us all the time, so thank you.
Mr. Johnson, you have anything? All right. Then this part of the meeting is adjourned.